We go ahead and get the meeting going. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council of January 5th, 2021. Way good to say 2021. Hopefully that'll ring truer than it did 2020. So, let me give you my disclaimer first pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 29-30 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Wow, has it been that long? Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. So, Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
You're muted, Cindy.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, for those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comments. So, we will now move on to our invocation. I am pleased to welcome back our good friend Pastor Jim Walden. I can't think of a better way to start the new year to hear prayer from Pastor Walden, who is always so upbeat and welcoming. And thank you from the city for all that you do, not only for your church, but for the city as well. So, I got a plug in there for you that First Baptist Church is located at 6019 Baldwin Avenue, Temple City. Just look for the big sign there and know with all the updated news as you go by. And I read it every morning as I drive up Baldwin to work. So, without further ado, Pastor Walden, if you will please provide tonight's invocation for us. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you all. Let's pray. Father, thank you for a new year. And we pray for a blessed year with your hand upon us. We are dependent upon you. We are indeed one nation under God, indivisible. We want liberty and justice for all. I thank you for the city council, Father. What a privilege it is to meet with them and to pray for and with them. And Lord, I especially ask for the family of Bill Reed tonight with his passing. What a loss. As you know, Father, it's been such a year of loss, but we pray for his wife and kids and grandchildren, Lord, that your mercy and grace would surround them and so would the folks of Temple City. Lord, I ask for great wisdom, great stamina, and that this epidemic and pandemic would soon come to an end by your merciful hand. Thank you for how you love us and giving us this new year. So bless this wonderful team of men and women. In the powerful name of Jesus, I thank you and say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim, and our prayers brought to you and your family. Continue good health.
Thank you. I'm gonna head out, but Lord bless you all. Thank you again.
Good to see you. Thank you. Take care. Okay, now we will stand for our pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to item number five, ceremonial matters. We have none this evening. Move on to item six, public comments. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I'll ask Madam Clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, Mayor. There are no email requests to speak.
Do we have anybody waiting on the line?
No, sir.
Okay, I will then close public comments. We will now move on to item seven. Sorry? I thought I heard something. Okay, now move on to item number seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second unless there's objection. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, next item is a public hearing. There is none, unfinished business, none this evening. We will move on to item 10, our new business overview of temporary emergency action related to continuity of city services and personnel and request for direction. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you and all those who are listening, all the staff. This is a report back shortly before Thanksgiving holiday. As the COVID numbers were increasing over time, we made some further adjustments from a staffing standpoint. Appointments at the city hall had been closed. And with the surge in the way that it is playing out now and for the foreseeable future puts us in the position of still trying to provide a level of service while not what it was, but enough to where all the public is served in terms of building and safety inspections, but in the safest manner possible that we can. And that includes our park system as well. This policy has allowed us to continue to provide service to the community. We will be reporting back to the next meeting with our audit, which will show some of those numbers in terms of what the fiscal impacts have been. But again, because we budget the entire salaries throughout the year, there's not, there's an accounting impact, but not a budgetary impact to this program. And right now, what you're seeing, and something that you're seeing a little bit different than the prior ones, is that we are more in the mode of where we were in March, April, May than we were in the summertime. So that's why you see a little bit of the higher numbers on the fiscal impact. Again, not a budgetary impact, but an accounting standpoint because you are essentially, you know, creating a little bit more leave liability. So that's why you see that difference. And at this point, we anticipate that going on for some time. Crews have been doing a good job out in the field. People have been working. I'll be amazing. And without it, we would not really be providing the service to the community in many ways. So if I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we start with council questions? Councilmember Mann, are there any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
None. Thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Yu?
I have no questions, Mayor.
Thank you. I have no questions either. I'll ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
No, Mayor.
And is there anybody who is on the line, wish to speak at this time?
There are no public callers.
Thank you. So I will close public comment. Any final council questions from anyone? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Chavez, I'll move that we direct her to extend paid administrative leave for the period of February 1st to March 31st, 2021 for all employees except senior leaders and rec leaders.
Second?
We have a motion in a second unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, if we can have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to item 11, update from our city manager. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I begin my report today with what Pastor Walden unfortunately had to pray about. We lost one of our own this past week, Bill Reed. He was a building inspector for the city and part of that with TransTech for many years, providing truly an essential service to the community, a service that ensures life and safety for others. It is a profound loss that has hit us all very much. One thing, and I don't even know if Scott knows this, he may. So sometimes you saw caller one on some of our meetings. Bill about a couple of months ago told me, hey, Brian, I check in on the council meetings every once in a while and thank you for all your support. So it wasn't, he was kind of a gentle giant, but one who would, and he extended, that day, he extended his great appreciation to all of his colleagues and everyone for the support he was given. And it is a sad day. We will be, staff is organizing a few things and I'll make sure, you know, I'll make sure the council's abreast of that. But it is, it's a sad week for the city. Next week is what, next meeting as well, during our next meeting, we'll be providing a quarterly update on our finances, including a preview of our mid-year in terms of where we are financially. We are, and I think the mayor and Mayor Protem will be reporting out on audit committee in a few moments as well. So I'll leave it to them to add anything that they would like to add as well. In addition, in the next couple of weeks, there will be interviews for the sheriff's captain, which I'll be participating in in a couple of weeks. And I'll be reporting back to you on that. With that, blessings and condolences to the entire Reed family, his grandchildren and his grandchildren. And thank you.
Hey, thank you. We will now move on to item 12, update from our city attorney. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items tonight. One, as you know, I briefed you a couple of times in the fall on recent legislation that was passed by the state that would affect the city. At your next meeting, the city staff will bring a more thorough report to you, including a written staff report, giving you even more statutes that may be affecting the city this year and beyond. In addition, I would like to let you know, but also let the public know, today, the county board of supervisors extended its eviction moratorium for both residential and commercial tenants. Based on the language of the moratorium as it currently stands, tenants would have 12 months after the end of February of 2021 to bring their accounts up to current if they've been unable to pay rent. The reasons for not being able to pay rent are very similar to what were in the city's moratorium. As the council knows, the city's moratorium expired and people within the city were due to have to come current by March of this year. County's moratorium supersedes that as well. There's a state moratorium in place. So there's overlapping levels of what I would describe as protection for renters, but also difficulties for landlords. I also wanted to let the council know that the state, the county of Los Angeles, and a number of larger cities within the council have been sued based on their eviction moratoriums. The basic claim is violation of constitutional rights of the landlords. I don't have the timing of that, but one of my partners is involved in it. So I will be getting the timing of the hearings on that for the city soon. And then we'll monitor it and continue to brief you because I know that this was an issue of great importance to you as the pandemic started and that you dealt with in terms that were very fair to Temple City and balanced. But as I say, people on both sides are taking issue with it. So we'll keep an eye on it and I'll keep briefing you as we go on. And that looks like my notes for tonight, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll then move on to item number 13, council reports regarding any ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I believe that we've only had one since our last meeting, which was our audit standing committee meeting. Mayor Protem Yu, did you want to report out on that?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. So the mayor and I met with Mr. City Manager and staff and our outside auditor on the 18th of December, Roger Alferro, Eddie Bailey, LLP. In essence, the outside auditor has given the city a great bill of health. And so we had reviewed and approved the minutes. We also received a verbal audit report. And I guess in short, it's the state's been doing very well. So I'm glad to report that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes. Basically, the auditors found no significant difficulties or disagreements with management or staff. And of course, will present their full report. I believe, Brian, it's at our next council meeting or is it the first meeting in February? I'm not sure.
Believe it's second meeting in January, but either for second meeting in January or first meeting in February.
Okay, so, yeah, so it'll all be presented to council and everything is, Mayor Protem Yu stated, everything looks real good. So good news on that front. All right, thank you, Vince, for that. Are there any other reports? I don't believe we had any, any other meetings or standing committee meetings. So, okay, we will now move on to item number 14. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. I'll go ahead and begin with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. So I want to extend my condolences to Bill Reed's family. You know, this COVID that we've been dealing with for such a long time, especially with the recent surge. I mean, this really hits close to home when we lose a member of our Temple City family. I just hope we continue to do everything we can to everyone, not just city staff, everyone in our community. And I know we're in a new year, but the COVID is still very real. So we really got to hunker down, tough through this. On a separate note, I do want to thank the audit committee for their work and also, of course, you know, city manager Cook, yes, or department heads that, you know, made it possible for some good news during these tough times. To be in relatively good health during this crisis is a bright spot in the city, especially considering some of the reports from other agencies aren't quite as stellar. So I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful that we do have good news to share. And I do want to send a shout out to our sheriff's department. I see Lieutenant Ruiz on the line with us today, as well as all of our healthcare workers. You know, we have the vaccine rolling out, but still, it's still an uphill battle. It's not, it's not the end. And they face it every much different. So I want to thank them from the bottom. Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you, Councilmember Mann. Councilmember Sternquist? You're muted, Cindy.
Trying to press the button. My condolences to Bill Reed's family. Thank you for those kind words, William. I think we all are concerned about our, not just our own families, but our families and our city family that we care so much about. And I just think this, for some reason, this second wave of COVID is just really got me depressed. I think I was hoping that by this time we would be on our way, you know, further along with the vaccination. But it's really affected quite a few of the organizations that I serve on as liaison for the city. And we've had numerous outbreaks and deaths with Foothill Transit, Mosquito District. So, you know, it just, it seems like every day I'm hearing bad news about someone who has passed or a whole family that is infected. So I so appreciate Pastor Walden coming on today and praying with us. I don't think we can pray enough in these times. Greg, I asked you earlier, I think before a couple were on about the Alley County vote tonight regarding Heroes Pay, which would increase the major grocery workers to get an additional $5 per hour for four months. I actually, the article didn't have the vote, but I guess it was the new supervisor and Hilda Solis who brought that motion forward and it did pass. That being said, I think it will have some effect on the bus drivers for Foothill Transit who have recently been asking, it seems weekly, for hazard pay. And I just have a little bit of an issue with it being called Heroes Pay because it's, you know, it's, there are so many heroes to me. Who's to say one group of people is, you know, grocery workers are less exposed than bus drivers or vice versa? So I don't know. I just think for our agency in particular and Metro, who are already stressed, stretched to the limits with not having enough service, we're going to see more issues coming forth. So I just wanted to apprise the council of that, that there are challenges in many of our organizations that all of us serve on also. And I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
My condolences to Mr. Reed also, although I didn't really know him, but he was part of our family. Just philosophizing a little bit, I keep finding myself in the position where I feel extremely sorry for myself because I'm stuck here, unable to see the world. And some of, you know, I tend to be a little gregarious and I like to go out, see people and go to different places. And then I remind myself, I'm healthy, my family's healthy, the majority of the people that I know have not been directly affected. And need to be grateful for that. This will end sometime, uh, too. Let's just hope it's sooner rather than later. So that's, that's kind of my message. Yeah, it's miserable, but the alternative is even worse. Well, let's hang in there, folks. Tom, a question. Yes. Earlier at another meeting, you heard me hit on the issue of the Christmas lights. How could we address that? And the issue is this. My family wants to keep our lights on to kind of, you know, tell the COVID that we're not intimidated and keep some spark of light up here in the city. How can, is there, how could I best approach that? And how do you guys feel about it?
Well, personally, I think it's a great idea. We have some, obviously, rules, ordinances in place regarding when Christmas lights can go up, when they can, when they must come down. I'll defer to Mr. Murphy and Mr. Cook, but I'm sure there's something that we can do, that is, if council wishes to do so, regarding either relaxation of the enforcement of that ordinance or even something even more affirmative as far as making it, you know, I think, I think it'd make a good gesture to the community that, you know, this is, we want to keep the lights on, so to speak. And maybe a good way of showing some community unity in that regard. So, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Cook, do you have any ideas on that? I know that we do have the city ordinance regarding that issue.
Just as you've been talking, a couple of ideas spring to mind. One would be an urgency ordinance that would suspend the existing ordinance for a period of time. The other would be a resolution suspending enforcement. If there's consensus to have us bring back something, I will work with Mr. Cook to bring back something on your next agenda. And we can put something in front of the council at that time that you can discuss and potentially adopt.
Greg? Are we, do we have that coming up or did we already do that regarding the overnight parking? Are we, we're still relaxed with that, correct?
Yes.
And did you have a time where we were going to start enforcing again? Because I thought if not, we could possibly do them both together and just say they're continued to be relaxed if that's what the council wishes.
The overnight parking, Councilmember Sternquist, that has continued to be suspended. That was the direction of the council. If you'd like to do that formally, that's fine, but until I get a affirmative direction from your council that, that you'd like me to bring it back to for enforcement with the notice similar to what we did with street sweeping, we can do that. Either way, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
No, I was about.
Cindy, it was my understanding that when we last looked at this was when we instituted the, on the street sweeping, that we stopped the moratorium on that, but we agreed that the overnight parking would remain in suspension until, until further direction. So I don't really, I'm not really sure we need to do anything on that unless we want to end it.
No, I was not thinking about ending it, but I have seen quite a few questions on, and I'm sure Brian has, staff has probably seen them also on, I guess it's the Facebook pages that people talk regarding their neighborhoods, like I'm on Hope. And people continue to ask those questions regarding, is parking still relaxed? So I think there is some question, but I was thinking if we're going to relax the the Christmas lights, we could at that time just reiterate that the overnight parking is relaxed also.
Okay, unless there's any objection, why don't, why don't, unless anyone else has anything else to say, I would direct staff to bring this issue back at our next council meeting. That should give you enough time to further discuss this issue, including lights and overnight parking. Probably not a bad idea to periodically clear those things up for everyone.
No problem.
Right. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Protem Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I encourage my call council members to express condolences to Mr. Reed's family. This COVID thing is real and personal. As some of you know, I built my house a couple, three years ago. And actually, Mr. Reed inspected my house. And so as I looked around here, I can, I mean, you can see in the camera too. I mean, he was the one inspected this house for me. And, but I think it really stresses one point, even though we don't believe Mr. Reed contacted COVID from his work. But, but I think it points to two different, two things. One is we really need to take this COVID thing seriously. So when there's a health order, we should follow it. Stay home, wear masks, distancing, wash hands and avoid gatherings. But yeah, at the same time, like I agree with all you just said, that we really need to appreciate our city, all our city workers who are out there on the front. city workers who are out there on the front line. I mean, not just our healthcare workers, our city workers out there cleaning, you know, getting in touch, emptying trash cans, and doing a lot of maintenance around the city. And we really appreciate what they have done for us. And obviously, we are very grateful to our sheriff's department. They're out there, and we have no choice. Everybody runs away, social distancing, whereas they are there to, you know, respect guys, and they're supposed to law. So really, I really think that we really need to thank them for what they have done and continue to do. So today, we kind of voted very quickly on the admin leave, but I really think that our staff really deserve the care and recognition for what they have done during this COVID time to keep the city running. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vince. You know, I, of course, echo all the comments that are made by my fellow council members. You know, I agree with the extent, you know, I think, you know, a lot of us have experienced moments of depression and even sadness over the past few months, you know, all hoping that this goes away and, of course, face the reality that it's not going away, at least anytime soon. You know, one of the things that bothers me the most, I think, is all the negativity in the news. I mean, every day, I mean, it's good to the point where I don't even want to read the newspaper, or maybe go straight, maybe go straight to the comics and, and then stop there. It's, you know, and, you know, I understand that, but it's not, you know, certainly, it's not just COVID, but, you know, election results, social justice issues. You know, it's an understatement, obviously, to, to say that 2020 has been a, was a tough, tough year. And 2021, of course, as we have, we all come into with high hopes and, and rightly so, we know that there's still a long ways to go. But, you know, I always, I get, I tell myself, and I tell those around me, you know, we need to, we need to stay strong. To you, especially my colleagues on the council, you know, people look to their leaders. They always have. And I'm very proud to be a part of a good leadership team here in the city. And, you know, even though we have a lot of negativity around us, we still find ways through our staff, through our department heads, to keep things moving along in Temple City and to to keep those things that we love, you know, around and, and, and close to us. We have a great sheriff department, as Vince said earlier, who cares a lot about our community and keeping it safe. You know, without the, how should I say? Bad, the bad press that sometimes go with that. So, you know, it's, it's something to be proud of. You know, I know that a lot of us, you know, we go into city hall from time to time and are used to anyway, and it was always nice to, to say hi to everybody and to, you know, and we do, I think Vince hit upon it, and William, we are a family at city hall regardless. You know, we're not a large city. We get to know everybody. Bill, I remember, and as, as Brian said, was a, was a gentle giant. I know, going into city hall, many times I would go in early, try to go in early on my way to work before anybody was there, and Bill be sitting at his desk working. And, you know, and he'd be, he was very appreciative of the donuts that I would bring in on Tuesdays. So I know he liked to have his donuts. But certainly, when something like this happens, it hits close to home. And of course, our prayers go out to his wife, Jerlyn, and, and family. And, and, you know, it's, there's not a whole lot we could say, but, you know, we wish you the best. And if there's anything that we can do here, please, please do not hesitate to let us know. So, you know, let's, let's try to end on a good note, and that is, we'll, we'll keep working hard. I know we will. And, you know, we'll keep doing what we can to make things better for, for our city, for our community. And I know it's a kind of an old, kind of a used term, but we'll all get through this together. I know we will. So, all right. So let's now move on to item number 15, additional public comments not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay. And do we have anybody on the line?
I'm sorry, sir. There's actually a email from Jerry Janbazian. He wanted to know, what is paid administrative leave?
What is paid administrative leave? Mr. Cook, would you like to answer that question quickly?
Sure, very quickly. So with COVID, what we've had to do, some folks cannot work remotely 40 hours a week, or whatever the paid allotment is. So, and for example, right now with our maintenance crews, once we finish certain projects during the week, we try to get them home as quickly as possible. There may be a few hours here and there where they're not doing work. So in lieu of a furlough or any other type of reduction in pay, what we are doing is essentially covering that, those hours with that admin leave. So that, so that people, so our employees are made whole throughout the pandemic. And quite frankly, it's a little more transparent in terms of what we're doing, in terms of working at home, when we are working at home, and the time in between. Exempt employees are different than non-exempt employees, but that's the, that's the whole entire purpose.
Okay. And Jerry, if you have any further questions, please feel free to contact Mr. Cook, or Mr. Murphy, or myself, and we'd be glad to follow up with that. So, thank you for that. And so I will now close public comments. And wow, 8:07, we are ready for adjournment. And so before I adjourn, I again would like to say, you know, our condolences to the Reed family, and I would like to close this meeting in Bill's memory. He was a great guy, and he's going to certainly be missed. And our prayers go out to his family, and may he rest in peace. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have, have a good night. Be safe out there.
Have a good year.